Order selected Monday, August nineteenth. Zoom, the summer is over. Twenty twenty four to order. First order of business, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, in this law, the Constitution of this world.
Thank you, Charles. Well, for, I don't know if you're adjusting for color form. On the room and doesn't look like we have any other than town employees on this. Let's move on to item three, and that's the approval of minutes. Three dot one would be the August fifth, twenty twenty four regular meeting. And is there a motion?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
Comments, questions, suggested changes?
Yes.
Questions? No, here we go. I had none myself. Um, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
I have motion. Yeah, we will just, yeah. Um, I have one item to add to the agenda, and that would be for a board position. That would be elevating Todd Fanciolo from alternate to regular member on the HDC. Is there a motion to add to the agenda as eleven dot eleven?
Second.
In a second. Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. All right. Item four, park and recreation director, Pam Gary.
Good morning.
Good morning. Who's, who's batting, you're batting one for one right now, aren't we? Maybe two for three.
Brought my partner here, Terry, for some support because she obviously has been working with the senior program for quite a long time.
Got it.
Um, I'm here to seek board's approval for purchasing a hybrids SUV for myself to replace the board, not, well, to move over.
Supplement.
Right, supplement. So it's really three prompt. You have a senior program. I saw this early on, Matt, early on, um, in the first two months I was here, noticing that the senior program uses a bus. Called it the bus.
Yes, the big one.
To transport, I mean, we have a phenomenal transportation system, but they use that, the big vans, buses with sometimes only one person to go to New Haven. And many times it's a wheelchair, but there are other times when our little S CRV is out, out and about all over town transporting. So they're forced to use the big bus to go to New Haven. So I just feel like it, I could see taking our recreation program CRV Honda, pushing it over to the fleet, senior program fleet. The pickup truck is great seasonally, but for me, tooling around town in the pickup truck to forty miles of parks on a weekly basis, um, just makes sense to look at something more economical. And we could use the programming account for that purchase, which is a state contract as well. So to me, um, we did a little bit of number crunching yesterday, and if you want to share like the.
We, last year, we trans, we, with all the vehicles together for the senior program, we traveled about sixty-two thousand miles. Um, and about twenty of those were with the white van. So approximately a third were able to use the white van. But when that's tied up transporting some, because there are certain driveways we can't get into with the bus that we have to, we know certain individuals that we can't, you know, we can't send a bus because we're not going to get out of the driveway. Um, or people who just can't do the stairs, but they can get into the, the van. So we use the white van whenever we can. But with that's tied up with somebody else, then, and we do have, say, a run to New Haven with an individual that is not in a wheelchair, you know, we have to use the bus. Um, it's not just the, the gas, it's also just, have you ever been to New Haven lately? It's hard to move or it's pretty tough with the buses to get to these places and be able to offload somebody and. It, um, it just, I agree, it makes more sense if we can use the.
And the other benefit I see too is that there's, um, person doesn't need a CDL. So when we're looking for drivers, it's, um, a bit easier to hire.
So this is, excuse me, this is going to be another, no, no, but SUV. Okay, so it's not going to be wheelchair accessible?
No.
Or any thought of adding a wheelchair accessible van?
Um, it's, it's, uh, my understanding is they're close to a hundred thousand dollars anyway. Um, so.
Yeah, probably used one to probably.
When you, the ratio of people who are not using wheelchairs at the moment versus using wheelchairs, you're saying that if you just get a standard Honda CRV, you're just getting enough, yeah, that there's enough people who are not using wheelchairs that you could benefit from a Honda CRV type vehicle, the truck to park and wreck and, you know, so. I understand what Charles is saying, but maybe it's, we don't need it right now, another wheelchair accessible.
Um, yeah. Well, because the other piece of this is like just even runs to North Guilford. Um, you know, sometimes we have to send buses there and it may make more sense for, you know, for people who aren't using the wheelchair. I mean, the wheelchair is probably utilized maybe a couple times a day on average. There could be some days we don't have any wheelchairs, there's days there might be, you know, six runs with wheelchairs. Um, and it's another, you know, that, just because of this idea of shifting vehicles, that's why we weren't looking at getting anything new, just adding, um, you know, new for the fleet. We are in line to get another bus. Um, our older one now is a twenty eighteen. Um, it was the first one that I got with the fifty-three ten grant, but it's now, what, five, six years old? Still in great shape and we're still using it. But I, I did submit an application in the spring, um, to get another one that potentially down the road replaced that one. It takes approximately two years from the time you submit a grant to the time you physically get a bus. So it's, it seemed prudent that, um, that we at least apply. We have not heard yet, I have had indication that the grant was placed fairly high on the list though for Guilford. So we hope to get that. Um, but that's a eighty-twenty match. So it almost makes sense to, you know, to buy like a bus with, with that and be able to replace the twenty eighteen in three years when it probably reaches its max.
So we're talking, so we're talking about then two vehicles.
No, not one, just one. We're going to, we're going to buy a new one for Pam. Pam's pickup truck is going to go to the recreation staff.
Which is, which we need.
Recreation staff, which currently uses an SUV, Honda SUV, will give that to the senior program. So it's one new, it's one new vehicle. It's a new vehicle for the senior staff, but it's a new used vehicle for the senior staff. Um, but it is one. Um, to that point, Charles, um, I, if we're now going to take a third of potentially, uh, a significant block of, of rides on that bus out of play, uh, do we still need four buses or three buses or, you know, through kind of the big ones?
So we, well, right now we have three. Uh, yeah, yeah, there, I mean, we have, we do trips pretty much once a week where, you know, we fill the buses. Um, there's always something, you know, down, something going wrong, especially now with the twenty, twenty eighteen one. Like I said, it's in good shape, but just around the time they start to get pulled out for various services, you know, service needs that would be done. Um, and then, yeah, I mean, there are times, say you have a trip out, maybe with two buses, and then you have some wheelchairs. So it does, I don't think we need, I think three seems to be a good number right now, especially if we can utilize the vans. Um, even this morning I had a kind of an emergency thing that came up. So I, I asked if we could use the recreation vehicle for this morning to, um, to do a run. So to the van make more sense for that one.
I would, I would assume that if we're not necessarily going to reduce the fleet size, we're going to potentially extend the life of the fleet.
Right, and gas, you know, those buses get about eight miles to the gallon, I think.
Right.
More economical as well.
Eight miles to a gallon versus almost thirty.
Separate discussion, separate discussion, which I'm not totally familiar with. It was my understanding there's some, a newish program about a bus for multi-town. I know that's probably in an experimental stage at this point in time, but do you, what is your take on that? And our transportation?
Yeah, I do see people using it. Um, we actually have an agreement with them. We have an account because you have to pay for that bus. Um, our, our services is no charge to the seniors. And I do see people using it. I've used it just to, I wanted to try it out.
Oh, you pay for that?
Yeah, it's, it's one seventy, it's not, it's low cost, it's three fifty round trip. There's a fee for.
Anywhere within the two-town.
And they only go within Guilford and Madison where we will go as.
Maybe we just start up.
Well, it's, it's a pilot program.
Yeah.
Was funded through, uh, South Central Regional Council of Governments and the Department of Transportation. We partnered with Madison to get the grant, uh, for the first two years, um, and during that trial period.
It also runs on the weekends, which we don't, it runs after four, so.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen it parked and waiting and I was out and around last week and I saw it at different spots, you know, throughout town picking people up and everything. I don't know why I was under the impression that at least as a trial, it was not chargeable, but even three fifty.
Well, they also take any age, so, you know, you're going to see.
They pick up at your house.
Um, you know, pick up, you know.
It's not a bus stop issue.
No, it's, it's a curb to curb. That's the other issue we found with them is, I mentioned there are certain places you can't get in with a bus. They, they won't go into a driveway. They only go curb to curb. So some of our people with walkers, we go as close as we can to the house.
So I'm not trying to make a conversation out of it. I was just wondering if it, if the program is successful.
We, they've actually, we have an account with them and we call on them to help us. Say there's two or three people, we're kind of, oh gosh, we got stuck in New Haven. We'll call them up and say, hey, can you help us out and grab this person here so they don't have to wait? So they've actually been very good. It's, we utilize them to supplement us.
I mean, it makes sense, you know, if they could fill a bus. I always wondered why they were using buses for curb to curb, but I guess they coordinated some.
Yeah, it's been beneficial to us. I've learned.
See, park in there.
Park a lot.
I see it there too.
I was out and around last week, uh, and it, I saw a number of different places, uh, neighborhoods.
It's a very easy app-based system.
It is, even, even I figured out how to use it. I had my, I had my car serviced over at Dino's in Madison. I had an eight o'clock appointment, um, and signed up for the app. Uh, and I forgot to set my home, uh, thank you. Uh, I signed up for the app the day before, but I specifically called their help desk, um, to help walk me through it. Because I wanted to see what the experience was that our residents would have when they were working with their, their service team, help desk team. It was as good, as good a customer service experience as I'd seen it had in a long time. Um, I had scheduled, I had scheduled the bus for eight o'clock. Um, and you're right, they didn't, they didn't come into the parking lot. They, at, at Dino's, they, uh, came along, they just parked, pulled up alongside the curb. They were four minutes late, uh, but they give you a window of time, right? They give you a ten minute window and dropped me here at Town Hall. Uh, I was, I was here by, you know, quarter after and it was, uh, absolutely, and it wasn't the first ride of the day. Somebody had, somebody had booked a ride at seven o'clock. Um, in talking with the folks, uh, from the nine-town transit district, uh, which is, it's now called, uh, River, River Transit District, I think. Um, they're, they anticipate we're going to have, uh, significant usage by, uh, pre-teens and teens who cannot drive. So this will also become a supplement for some families for getting kids, uh, to and from activities after, after.
How long has it been in series?
Uh, we, it was a soft launch in June, I think it was early June. I have some data with, I'm going to share with you. Uh, the Joe Cumberford from, uh, the River Valley Transit District, that's what it's called now, um, has, has some data and has some comparative data to other pilot programs. Yeah, they're thrilled with the reaction.
Yeah, that's kind of stuff that people got to get familiar with.
Yeah, so, um, let's.
Over and above.
Just a couple of thoughts, not, really not directly about your request, which makes sense, I understand the need, but a couple of things. And, uh, last year when we were working on the capital budget, and I think the year before as well, we discussed the need for an inventory that we could see of all the vehicles and their usage.
For people.
Oh, I don't think we ever received that.
I think we, we have a list and we just didn't share it with you. Uh, Karen. And asset, the, uh, the.
Yeah, so, so we did have that inventory done. Um, we're in the process, and we can certainly share it with you. Um, it is an electronic file. Um, we're in the process of, and our intern here, Veronice is going to be working on it today. Um, we're in the process of taking that inventory and comparing it with what we have on our insurance list and what we have on, in our financial software, Munis. And the goal is for the financial software to be the main area, um, that, that we keep track of that. So, um, we're just trying to put those three pieces together, um, with the inventory being at the moment, the baseline, what we have, just so, um, just to be sure. But we can certainly, um, we do have that in. I, I hadn't shared, I figured we would have that for their capital planning coming up this year for sure.
Are we committed to having that this year for sure?
Absolutely.
Because it's very hard to make a one-off decision on adding a vehicle when we don't know what we have and we can't see what's, how things are being used. Could, could there possibly be a vehicle somewhere where it doesn't make sense to have it where it is? And that could be shifted, and we don't know these things. So making this decision sort of in a vacuum is not, probably not the best way of doing it. And we, we did seem in the last six years to add a lot of vehicles. I, I mean, just, I believe justifiably, but I, I agree with you, I think.
Today, right?
Yeah, and then I want, just one other thought, again, not specifically related, but something I'm really interested in seeing is what we spend on the senior programs. And the reason I'm asking that is I think it's really valuable for people to see that at budget time to understand this is something that's important in Guilford, we've made a commitment to it. And, you know, this, it's a, it's a certain percentage of the taxes. And that's just the way it is. So if, if that's something that could be scratched together in some fashion, I'd love to see that, not, nothing pressing.
So when you say that, Sue, are you talking about the senior meal program or what, how?
I'm kind of thinking about everything, you know, a senior living in Guilford has, um, just a lot of opportunities available that they wouldn't have if they lived in a different town. I, I'm not sure exactly what format I would want to see that in, but just to give people an idea of, of what we do and what it costs, what we. The services and then you could, you could prorate, not down to the last penny, but say, you know, out of the book, park and recreation salary budget, if it's two million dollars, five hundred thousand is devoted to senior services. Just a, a, I, just a general number, because I, it is a lot and people only see it like a piece of the pie as opposed to the whole pie.
Well, I just shared this senior meal program, which is a pretty extensive Excel sheet that shows, um, how much money is coming in, how much money is going out. I think, and has it ever been shared with the board something important?
No, we're, we're still working on fine tuning that document. I think I sent you an email yesterday that, uh.
Right, and I, and I emailed you back because I think you need to go on your PC for it, I had to go online, so it is, but I could share that.
Yeah, oh, I did a similar exercise with Rick, just for, you know, planning purposes a couple of years ago. So it may, there may be a, a document somewhere that, that we started that we were evaluating. Um, you know, what we're, uh, several different portions of what you guys do. Uh, the beach, uh, the senior program, uh, and then the general recreation.
I looked for that.
Right, um, yes, it's easy to identify those folks, Terry, uh, you know, and, uh, some of her staff directly working with the seniors. But we're going to have to make some assumptions in terms of allocating some time for everybody else. For instance, um, you know, half of your staff could be down there working lunchtime, right? Uh, the senior lunch meal, but how do you, how do you get a real number on that? That'll be some, that, that is, this is not going to be perfect.
It shouldn't be, no, perfect is the enemy.
Many of the things. So. It's like housing. You're right, there's a big investment and I, I agree with the investment, but I think if we had a number, other people would recognize that, you know, taxes are not only for education, right? You know, a lot of other things.
I've, I've tried to get it that through the budget presentations. Remember they had the highlights of each department, uh, which, you know, really, that really tells the story. Uh, you know, and now the financial piece of it could back that up, right?
I go, I have one more on autos, probably from MJ. When you have all the pieces of this inventory connected or up to date or stuff, right? Will it be an active live document so that when we add or attract vehicles, it'll all be automatic? Is it that kind of a?
It's going to require somebody to make.
I don't say it's going to be that automatic, but.
Well, I mean, sure, I mean, they got to be insured and that's what's driving this list, so it won't be automatic.
It should be.
I mean, it should be, you know, to buy a car, you got a red shirt, you got insurance.
Correct.
Part of the list.
Right, so through our financial system, yes, we, um, buy a vehicle, we flag it as a fixed asset and it can automatically put it, be put into our fixed assets, yes. Um, and how we, how we manipulate those reports for insurance, we just haven't, you know, worked that out. Not everything's going to be that fluid. You know, you buy a piece of equipment, we mark it, boom, it's in. Um, so for equipment and purchases and cars, maybe it can be a little bit more automatic, assuming somebody flags it, you know, as such. The difficulty will be other things like, um, building repairs and, you, you know what I mean? But, um, but on, on the whole, our goal is to have it a little bit more streamlined and to, um, really, uh, have our department heads be, be more forthcoming right away when they're, you, you know, doing something, you know? We typically see it, um, you know, Steve buys a new truck, we, we trade that in. Okay, we know that's done, one comes off, one comes in. But sometimes, you know, we have vehicles that move around and we have, you know, that's not going to be as automatic.
And I'm happy to set that aside until you get that list and, okay.
No, no, it's a separate budget question. I mean, the, and the reason I, I was hoping it could be more of an active working list is that we, we now decide cars get old and, and should be updated on, on their age and that type of thing. But it, in the real world, you start watching, you know, repair costs, you know, and, and all of those kinds of things, you know, some cars, you know, like the police, you know, that they have a much different cycle of, of life than a pickup truck that gets used a few times a beat, that type of thing. So that's why I was dreaming about.
We'll have to rely on department heads to keep track of that. Our financial software isn't going to know whether, it's not going to be tracking maintenance per vehicle. That's, that's not the goal of this.
Public Works was tracked.
They are, they do, they do.
They do for maintenance purposes. They have a, it's a separate system for maintenance purposes. Um, fortunately or unfortunately, uh, a month or so ago, I happened to pick up the phone at about quarter to five, five o'clock one day, which I should learn from, which I should learn from occasionally. Uh, and it was a gentleman from Enterprise Fleet Management. So it was a sales call and I'd been an old sales guy, I gave him his opportunity to make his pitch. Uh, and, uh, so I have shared with him our inventory list of vehicles, uh, with age, et cetera, that kind of stuff, and, and the department use. So, um, that data is being massaged. I'm very curious to see what they come back with in terms of, uh, they are, the enterprise is not a, uh, a, a, a commercial car with a legacy. They are a fleet company. That's their primary, that's their primary.
Buy a car from them, a lot of people buy cars from them.
So anyway, uh, if, if that turns out to be something that has some opportunity to help us manage fleet, uh, our fleet operations. It's hard to call it a fleet because when you think of a fleet, you usually think of, you know, sixteen-wheel trucks or, you know, or postal trucks. But as opposed to the wide variety of vehicles we have here.
Those are big numbers, I know, and the other part I have, we literally have, I see. And, uh, it, it's part of our monthly reports. I know the aging.
Yeah. Uh, the obvious question, funding?
Program account.
Program account? Okay, great. Any further questions?
Just, you didn't know he would be sitting here solo, but, uh, I just, this is a positive thing about the program account, nothing, nothing negative. At some point, not, not today, but you have been really, um, very enthusiastically using the program account. And so I, I would love to see, maybe it's through you and Jake, that, that, you know, we, we've had a report a while ago about what's in it. Some of the monies we know go back out to pay the counselors and all that. But you've been getting a lot of, uh, good things for park and wreck in the town. So I'd like to see sort of a bottom line number.
Sure, yeah, we're working on that.
We just did June thirty through June thirty.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, and actually Ellen's going to be emailing you just about, um, one area that needs to go to fiscal twenty-three.
Got it. And I don't know that we need to reconvene that little committee or anything, I don't think so. I don't think so, because I think everything that we wanted to do, you're, you're doing, so, yeah. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make my motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Any further comments, questions? Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thanks, Terry.
And, and really, this is not the first, uh, evidence that you displayed of looking at things differently. And we tend to, and I'm, I'm guilty of this too, uh, we tend to do things over and over because they make sense. So thanks for challenging. Uh, four dot two, Senator Ted possible action to purchase a self-impoverished rear gun mounted airless line scraper. You know, pioneer athletic under state contract. You have to get a fire, you have to get a firearm's license. This is impressive.
Well, here, this is another way of, of looking to save money. Um, we have used the company guidelines and we're also using another gentleman in town for a quote for lining our parking lots. And after a while, you just see that adding up. And that's just solely for our parks. So, um, Tony went out and got a quote for nineteen thousand on state contract for buying, purchasing a painting machine. Um, we feel like we could take care of Jacobs by ourselves rather than hiring out. We're, we're wanting to paint lines at Long Hill Park right now, Nut Plains gets lined. Um, at this point too, we can certainly look at Town Hall and the police department and, you know, use that machine for other various parking lots. So we just thought it made sense, it's costing up well over two thousand just for Jacobs. Um, as I said in my memo.
How many times this summer is that?
Um, two times in the summer.
So four thousand dollars.
Just Jacobs.
And rain too, right?
Right, because it depends on where I'm tearing, because we do it on the lawn and trying, we're trying to paint on the lawn. Long Hill right now is, um, just generously, the quote was reduced because somebody lives in town to nine hundred. But we got a quote today, um, from guidelines for that park, which was, we already examined eighteen fifty. Wow. So over time, being able to use this machine for various departments, I think, just, just makes sense.
Here, here's, right, yeah, pulling things out of memory and I don't get all the information, so if I'm off track, let me know. But I remember Rick having a conversation about having computerized your GPS line of the field.
We have that.
I, but is this at all connected to anything like that?
No, that one only works on fields. And so this particular machine, which is also very great.
Can do both. Oh, it can do both. Oh, so it is related.
Well, this machine is, however, the other machine that they purchased can only do fields.
But, yeah, we're still doing it by GPS and.
It is not, no, this is driven and only done manually. It's not like robotic.
Okay, so if it were to, to take over or back up the other machine, would it be manual and go back?
Mm-hmm, and even, even with the other machine, I think it, which is, is great. However, even though someone's not pushing it, someone has to stand there and watch it. Because you have to program it, so your person's not moving, not walking, but that person's still tied up.
I want to be over this, this.
To be no longer.
Put too many people.
No, we need it, it's, it's definitely, yeah. That person doesn't have to manually go up there and, and it's accurate, it's, it's, it's a great product, but it will not do parking lots.
Got it, okay. So all, everything in town right now, we're paying someone else to do as far as the, the striping.
Yeah.
Wow, wow.
And Jacob's ass is kind of something that could be shared with the. Yeah, well, I'm just, just looking at Dan as, uh, who as often has to contract with, uh, the striping companies. Um, is this something that we might be able to take advantage of in any places or?
Um, working in the road is different than a parking lot. But, um.
Yeah, but we got parked, I mean, Town Hall.
That's, that's one that must have also.
We have stuff to pay for the library.
Library too, yeah. The facilities would definitely be valuable.
Yeah, it's going up a lot, so it would help.
And even factoring in the cost of somebody's half day's labor, you're still netting significant savings. Okay.
That's an interesting point, I mean, seeing as, you know, we have other uses for besides parking rack. I mean, is it appropriate for, is this kind of machine appropriate for parking rack or is it going in another department to use throughout the town?
I think, I think the anticipation is the most money usage would come through parking racks, uh, for their purposes.
It's maybe like board of ed and you're talking about parking.
Oh, boy.
Absolutely.
No, that's a couple more guys.
That's like taking the five o'clock call, no, leave.
If we cross-train the Board of Education employees, they should be able to use the machine.
Well, do you see my point though? I mean, if we look at this globally, you know.
We're happy to share.
It might be a second.
Well, that's, you know, that's actually true.
I can imagine. It's one machine that does everything that's needed and all.
Over years, Tom? I mean, okay, you get my point there and make it that I think we should be looking at a machine like this globally. If there's that much price increase in buying things, you know, obviously we have more than just parking.
So even if we use this half a dozen times a year, it's going to pay for itself in two years.
Yeah, I have no problem with this learning experience, but I do think that.
Capitalize on it.
And this would also.
Community-wide. I mean, we talk about sharing with other communities, I probably share with.
Where are you storing, excuse me, Charles, where are you storing this kind of thing?
At Public Works, I mean, our Parks Bay, one of our bays.
What is it? Is it a drag at mine?
You can walk it in. There's also an assembly where you can sit and drive it too. So it's.
You just got to watch that rear gun. What a weak one. So the medium bombers.
It does, but the question, is there a front gun?
Why would they add that description?
All right, is there a motion to approve the purchase of the state contract in amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars? Funds coming out of the Recreation Program account?
I'll make a motion.
Second, second. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. Thank you.
Employee, I mean, is it something that a just employee could be trading in?
How extensive is the training? Is that what you're asking?
Do we have enough people?
Well, we certainly don't have enough people to do the entire town. Our hopes.
It's an entire town at this point, right.
Our hopes are that, you know, they'll be used for Dave at Public Works, he needs to use it as well, and Steve. So, and, but our guys will do as much as they can for parks and other.
So at this point in time, do you plan on using existing personnel?
Exactly. Oh, absolutely.
Then we've created some efficiencies with the automatic striping machine. So there are potentially some hours that now can be redeployed.
So when are we going to get laser-guided lawn mowers? Let your GPS-guided lawn mower. I lose taxes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mitch, Mary Jane, would you introduce our guest today, please?
Well, I was going to during my.
Oh, well then, perfect timing, perfect timing. All right, item five, finance director Mary Jane, always.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So yes, we have the pleasure of Veronica Zuniga, if I pronounced that correctly. She is our summer intern. She is going to be a senior here at Gilbert High School. And she has already been with a bunch of other departments. I heard a lot about her at Town Hall South. They had a good time with her, taking her around. And she's with Finance today, so what better than to share her with the Slutons?
Is she only one day with you?
Just one day. You know, I told Town Hall South, you know, the health and development department, you know, they get so much fame that they take her around and then they have to come to find you. We're just not as exciting.
It's going to be the highlight of your week.
Other than Steve coming in all the time looking for money.
Just for those who may not recall, this is a program we've done. We started the first year when we were in office as a team. And we, one year of COVID, I think we did, first year of COVID, we did not do it. And it is a program that's largely designed to introduce young, talented high school students to government and how government works. So the way we've, I can mention and Mary Jane a lot of credit, that they basically managed this program. I came up with the idea, but, you know, they get to do the implementation. They've done a great job. And that is to give them exposure as across this wide spectrum as you can. And the idea here is to at least give them an understanding and potentially pique their interest in going into public service. So this is, I think this is our sixth.
Yeah, I lost count. At least five, yeah.
In our conversation, she did indicate that she had interest in potentially being in public service, so welcome. MJ, get on to the more boring stuff.
Okay, so today I am presenting somewhat final, I say somewhat final, June thirty reports. Obviously, we have not been audited yet. We are in the process of that. We are still potentially looking at some of the encumbrances to remove. And I know we have some additional adjustments to make that aren't major. Shouldn't change the numbers too much, but this is where we stand now. On the revenue side, not much has changed. We have one point eight million dollars of surplus in our revenues, made up of mostly the lines we've talked about already, in-interest income, the Building Department with the increase in fees, the Fire Department with the increase of services that they've been performing, using family services with the continued amount of clientele that they are using. And Park and Rec with increases in just overall usage of their programs, that the programs that run through the General Fund. We also have some overages in state funding. So all in all, one point eight million dollars surplus in our revenues.
In the Park and Rec line? During the COVID years, their revenue understandably went down because they couldn't, they didn't have the programs and all that. So when you now are telling us that they've exceeded, are they back to pre-COVID numbers? Or if you don't know that today, you can tell us.
Yeah, I'm afraid I don't know the comparison between then and now. But, you know, just in revenue, revenue in room rental, you know, they've almost doubled their budget. And if you remember, room rentals was definitely one of the areas where we were receiving zero during COVID because people weren't meeting, so.
We also lost the significant revenue stream when the Vineyard Church left, because they used to rent every Sunday morning for three hours. It's a pretty significant account coming out. And I think we adjusted the budget.
Because of that.
In anticipation of that. So just better than, was it, almost a third, more than a third comes from the finance interest income. And we've talked about that ad nauseam a long time. When we put this budget together in twenty twenty-three, interest rates had not skyrocketed to the point where they did.
Right.
Great, the train's over.
Yeah, the Fed is changing their mind.
Well, that's it, you know, the Board of Finance put me up to a million dollars and I'm like, okay.
And then we continue to see. If I'm not mistaken, a couple of years ago, that was at, you know, five hundred thousand dollars. Three or four years ago, and now it's nearly a million. Significant portion, not a significant portion, but a big portion, that came from the one project. And that is Target renovation of that facility. I believe that was about ninety-one thousand, somewhere around that.
Which is, which makes it hard for us to budget year over year because we have those anomalies. You know, you don't have the target every year. So if you budget, that's why we try to budget based on, you know, an average of a number of years or so, because you might have one big year. That doesn't mean next year you're going to have that. So it makes it difficult for the department sometimes to figure out where they might be.
And when you add in fire ambulance revenues, you know, you're talking about most of, most of that surplus is coming from those three.
Correct. And the Fire Department revenue really is telling when you go to the, on the expenditure side, because this revenue is generated from calls. And the more calls we get, if we have to bring out another ambulance, that requires additional staffing that we bring in at that time, which has an offset on the expenditure side. Not one for one, but it is part of the equation.
Any other questions on revenue? Shall we go to expenses?
So on the expenditure side, again, similar story that we've been talking about over the last few months. We do have the three line items that are over budget as we stand on paper. Here today, the IT Department, the golf course, actually four, the golf course, the Fire Department and capital. And almost all of those are due to items that we had budgeted from our fund balance committed funds that we had set aside for these particular purposes. And you'll see that later on in my presentation where we look to make these whole. So the Board of Education, you'll see the Board of Education budget is finalized, except for audited, at the hundred and three thousand dollars left in their budget. That balances to them to the penny at this point, unless again, there are some audit adjustments. So all the numbers we have here are pretty good. We do have a couple of very small purchase orders that we were working on taking care of, but it's not going to affect the transfers I'm requesting today because when we get rid of some of these little ones, it just gives them more money. They're not going over budget. So I feel confident that the numbers were coming today for transfers will hold steady.
Thank you, MJ. Just one note on the Board of Education. They're anticipated to have a surplus of one hundred and three. I think I mentioned this to folks before, I know we've talked to the Board of Finance and Board, Ed, Mary Jane and I have Board of Education. Recent legislative action, this past session, enables Boards of Education to retain surplus for their own purposes in a separate fund. It was always allowed under state statutes, but it needed the approval of the legislative and financial bodies. So it would have had to have been approved by Board of Finance and Board of Selectment. This eliminates that requirement that those other boards act on it. So this is a Board of Education prerogative. So I think we talked about it in the May or June meeting with the Board of Finance, with the Board of Education there. And I think it is there, we can anticipate that they're going to ask to hold on to that, those funds. Because we very rarely use assigned fund balance for education purposes. So this gives them the opportunity to build some funds for emergencies or if they're going over budget, not having to cut programs. It also gives them the opportunity to fund some of the capital projects, the engineering costs on some of the capital projects. So if we're to come on that, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that that was more than likely going to be affected.
So where will that sit on the financial statement? That's what that's. It's on the board of ed side. We would have, it would have to be accounted for somehow, but we haven't really hashed any of that out yet. Yeah.
Sure, that's a conversation for your next GFOA meeting.
This is going to sound terribly cynical. I don't really mean it to be, but I'm just sort of, their budget is usually razor close. Fifty thousand dollars this year, that's about what they get. I'm just sort of, it'll be interesting to see whether that incentive or the changes that all of a sudden that surplus kind of bumps up, which is a good thing.
It's either spent this year or it's spent in another.
Well, but they have something coming, you know, maybe they're kind of, you know, there's two ways to act that. So it's probably not a bad thing, is my point.
And just as a point of clarification, they cannot reserve more than three percent of their budget that's in the statute. But three percent of the budget.
So it's not going to be some bad.
It's a big.
It's a big number.
But they have big expenses too.
Yeah.
That's a little over two million dollars, three percent of their budget, so. You're right, though. It'll be interesting to see how that gets translated. All right, MJ, sorry to.
No, that's okay. If you have any specific questions, I know we've gone over all of these lines before, but if you have any specific questions.
Anything on questions? Any questions are open. That must be your point of report to Board of Finance Capital Funder.
Yeah, there's only one thing I'd like to mention on the capital reports for, on the town side fund two one seven. We have town property improvements and equipment acquisitions back from fiscal year twelve and thirteen. That, that project is at zero right now, so we are closing that out. And I did speak to bond counsel, because it's at zero, I don't need any, any action from the Board of Selectment or the Board of Finance, whereas other times if I need to shift money around to close them out, this one we closed out, you know.
Good for you.
Little by little.
Well, sometimes we can, you know, it all depends on the projects. This is the first one since I've been here that we've closed out because it's zero. But so I'm just telling you that, so the next quarter, this one will be off the report.
Oh, sure, before the high school project comes off.
The high school project will come off the report next month at this time. Because today I'm coming to you with just the transfers to close out the general fund. Next month I'll be coming to you in the Board of Finance with other transfers for other funds. And so the high school project, I know I talked about it with the Board of Finance, I'm not sure if I mentioned it here. The high school project is complete. We have received all of our funding from the state. We do have a balance of approximately two hundred thousand dollars, which is made up of some bonding costs and stuff that we applied to the project that the state does not allow. So I'm, instead of bonding for such a small amount and coming to you and the Board of Finance to use fund balance to close that account out, to me, it just doesn't make financial sense to bond for that, specifically since the project was complete in twenty fifteen or something like that, or whatever the. It would be taxable bonding at this point. It makes no sense to go out to bond for.
For soft costs anyway.
Correct, yes. So you'll see that I have that, you'll have that on your agenda next month when I have all of the fund balance transfers and all of that to come forward. So that will finally close that project out.
The building that's going to become the administration building is not part of this high school closeout?
No, 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 that was just the construction of the school. Like I said, we applied the bonding costs all those years, but, you know, we had a couple of small purchase orders, that a couple of small purchases that we didn't go out to bid for, very small purchases. We normally would not. The state requires it, so there's a little bit of that, but I'll have the full report for you so that you can see.
Any other questions on those projects?
Yeah, so that's all I wanted to bring to your attention there.
Great. Anything on the warrants? Those questions that come tonight. Medical.
So I've got a few things to talk about on the medical. So I have to say, I spent a long time doing, redoing this and trying to figure out the best way to show what, how we're actually budgeting for this. So I want to first bring your attention over on fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. On the claim side, down towards the bottom, I have prescription rebates. So we anticipate almost a million dollars of rebates from, through the insurance company. And it's a separate thing that we're tracking. And it's it's a separate thing that we're tracking. And so I so I have it, instead of just incorporating it into the claims, I'm listing it there separately, although so this month in July, you know, there's already some of these, sorry for me to explain, there's more than one type of prescription rebate. Some come automatically as claims are generated and we get those every year and they're already in the claims number. So we're keeping those. We're anticipating some rebates over and above through Anthem that will bring those claims numbers down. So I'm trying to account for those separately because it's not necessarily something we would get every year. We may from now on, but we we may not. I think Anthem was working with us to bring our numbers down because we went out to bid. So they were, you know, they sharpened their pencils, and this is one way that they were able to bring their overall numbers down. So I'm showing that, I'm I'm gonna try to show that separately as as we go through, but it's 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 new for me. It's so I'm trying to be transparent of it, is what I'm trying to say. So that so that's that part. Then I want to bring your attention all the way to the very bottom of my form, which is the vision coverage balance. So Anthem is giving us thirty five thousand dollar wellness, additional wellness credit. And we chose as a committee, and I I think Mitch already explained this to you when he came looking for the approval for the vision coverage, but we're using this credit to cover the cost, the town's cost of this new benefit. Employees still have to pay, so you'll see I have an Anthem credit which we received already, the thirty five thousand dollars for the month of July, employees contributed three hundred and twenty four dollars and the expense of the program was eight hundred and fourteen. It is our, it was the committee, and I say the committee, it's the town, it's the Board of Ed that manages the medical. Our feeling is to fund this vision program through this wellness credit for as long as we can. And so I'm counting for it outside, it's all in the medical fund, but I'm counting for it outside so that we can track it. So the this eight hundred and fourteen dollars worth of expense is not up top in the expenditures. So you'll see under my fund balance projection, I'm adding back in balance of the vision coverage because that is in the fund balance. But you know, because this this report, we use it to present to you in the Board of Finance to show where we are, but for me, it's it's how I track, you know, all of the pieces of the medical. So we, as a group, had thought to separately track that, so that's what I'm trying to do here.
In some of the conversations we had with the Anthem contribution, while we know it is, we got it this year, there are no assurances we're gonna get it in subsequent years, but however, one of the things that we had contemplated in the discussion was if Anthem continues to fund it, this may well become a benefit that the employees no longer have to pay for. For those who may recall, this is a one dollar per individual, one dollar per month per individual.
A week.
A week, rather. Fifty two dollars a year per per individual that's covered. And you can receive up to two hundred, two hundred dollars in credits on the purchase of of glasses. Anything that is not covered by your other provider. These were part of that program. And the one thing you have to be careful about, like every medical coverage is in-network and out-of-network. Okay, and I was out of network, so I was not able to realize the full two hundred, which is fine. I still got I still have them paid for, not paid for, but a portion of them paid. That exceeds my contribution. So this program is has has value. And if there's a way that we can, if we could get Anthem continually funded or to a level where we can at least cover the employees' contributions, that would be helpful. Not the fifty two dollars is gonna break the bank in most places, but in some cases it might help. So we're showing the balance of, what, thirty four, five, ten, and then the premium expenses, about a thousand dollars, eight hundred dollars a month.
The players are coming back. Yeah, we could go, you know, a few years on that, so. So I just wanted to note that you'll see for July, we had claims of over a million dollars, which is showing slightly higher than we typically have in July. But with our new stop-loss program being outside of Anthem, we don't have the the funding coming, the the money hasn't come back to us yet. So so I'm always gonna be in in arrears for that, so that's that's why it appears to be higher. Unfortunately, I don't have the stop-loss numbers. As you see, my place is is empty at this point, was unable to get the stop-loss numbers prior to today's meeting. But certainly, you know, top of that.
Great. Any further questions? All right, okay, thank you. Next up, Senator Takepaw's question on end of year transfers to close out FY twenty three, twenty four.
So what I presented on your board pack today, first of all, is just the list of transfers that I'm gonna go over. And then secondly, what this expenditure for expenditure looks like if all of the transfers are approved. So you can see that the where the balance is, and you'll see the balance is is very different. And we'll talk about that afterwards. So as typical, I have a number of transfers coming into our general fund made up of those four departments that we've talked about, information technology, golf, fire and capital, coming from committed fund balance, and I'm recommending that the fire department come from unassigned balance, and I'll talk talk about that as well. So on the information technology side, this is where we have been, we paid the software license and support for entergov. If you remember when we presented our budget this past year, we have now incorporated entergov into our budget. Hopefully, hopefully, we won't need to have transfer in the future nor to use the technology fund on at least the operational side of that. On the for golf, they went over on their part-time salaries mainly due to the usage at the at the golf course. We've talked about that over the past couple of months. As the golf course is getting used, we need the guys to be in there to maintain the course. So we have a small amount there.
Should we anticipate that in our next budget deliberations to to raise that number?
Certainly. Looking at that, yep. Under the fire department, I did break it down over to the major areas where they have the overage, the placement salaries that we have discussed, operating supplies, those are all the supplies needed to be on the ambulances. So as ambulance use goes up, so do our supply needs. They did have a major vehicle maintenance on one of their trucks, which which caused the overage in the vehicle maintenance. Same thing with building maintenance. They had some exorbitant expenses there that they hadn't anticipated. And again, the overtime line also that attributes to the use of ambulance. Did have our chief at the last Board of Finance meeting in attendance to talk with them in case they had any further questions. So they have already gone through that with the chief. Under capital, I've kind of highlighted all the areas in capital that we spent money in capital, but we had money set set aside specifically for these programs. So five ninety five New England Road, which we've been doing some work there, came out of facility projects, Long Hill Road came out of facility projects as well. The technology budget that this is made up of many things that we've done technology-wise. Significant portion of that is still entergov. We have consultants that we've hired to help us with that. And but we do have some other things that we've added, you know, that we've put there. That's coming out of the technology money. On the engineering side, we spent some money for engineering for the lot sit program, so we have that funding. Safe Streets Consulting Services, there was a, we had various areas around town that had some consulting services done to provide data for the Safe Streets Committee, so we have have specifically money set aside for that. Town Hall roof, the Town Hall South Roof and the Library Roof, we brought out a facilities project. Remember the Library Roof, we had budgeted a small amount, came in much higher, and we chose to use facility money set aside instead of adding more to our general fund budget. We had some codification done by planning and zoning. We have money set aside for that in the planning department. Town Town Properties, just some building improvements that throughout the year were approved. We had some fencing at Town Hall South. We redid the finance office, the registrar's office and the town properties offices for 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 some updates there. We we took all of that out of facilities projects. We did some work at fifty two Church Street. We had to remove a a tank, yeah, the tanks and remediate the soil. That's what makes that up. For the Board of Selectmen, GCTV equipment, we agreed to to pay a portion of that. And the police vehicles went went over on their line item just for for pricing. So I think I have that coming out of unassigned fund balance. So I do have the money coming out of committed. I'm recommending the golf, the fire and and the police vehicles come out of unassigned fund balance. This will come from money that is falling into the fund balance at the end of the year, and then we'll just reallocate it to, correct, we're gonna go around, go around in a circle. So so that's that's departments that needed money to cover their budgets. Are there any questions there? Because I know I can blabber on.
Very helpful, very extensive, very clear.
So then on the flip side, at the bottom part of your page, we have some funding that didn't get finished in fiscal year twenty four and we're being asked to move it into fiscal year twenty five. As I reported last year, you may or may not remember, we used to have purchase orders just out for this money, and that's how we accounted for it. And our auditors requested that we change that practice. So we we take money for a specific project or purpose. We put it into our carried and forced fund for that specific project or purpose, and that is how the money is spent unless they come and seek permission for some other, for some other reason. So we have some cap, mostly capital, some operating items. Under capital, the library did not use their technology money. They have a big project coming up in this this current year and requested early on that they be able to take the money from fiscal twenty four, combine it with their twenty five money and do the project. So we have that there. The building department's vehicle did not get purchased, but I believe I have a purchase order out for it already. You know, between vehicles, acquiring vehicles and and some things, it takes us so long, which is why there's a lot of that on this list. Town Property, same thing with their vehicle, took a while to get. Then on parking wreck, we have some building maintenance, some equipment, vehicles and field maintenance that that didn't get done. It's really a combination of items that that they couldn't get done based on getting the equipment and also just the the transfer, the transfer from Rick to to Pam and getting Pam up to speed with really what needed to be done. And I told her early on, please don't rush to get things done that you're not familiar with or confident on, you know what I mean? So that's really the reason. Normally, we wouldn't have this much for for parking wreck, but she she's really on the ball. She's she's getting a lot of this work done and working with her staff.
MJ couldn't agree more. And one of the areas that I asked her to focus on early on in her tenure was the capital projects funded by ARPA. In particular, the the Septic.
Jacob's Beach.
Jacob's Beach Playground, Bitter Park Playground. And I think as you saw, she dug, she jumped into the two playgrounds and did the community surveys and so she she gets a pass.
Correct, yeah. So, yeah, that's why. Push everybody for ARPA money.
But yeah, it's not just Pam.
She had significant dollars, correct.
Nine hundred thousand dollars worth of projects.
Okay, moving on, the golf course had a piece of equipment they were having trouble acquiring. I do already have a purchase order for this money once if it's approved. Public Works had some road and road and drainage money that they didn't use, hoping to bring that over into the new year. Natural Resources, some weed control and the carpet replacement project for the library. Those are all capital projects that did not get done that we're asking to to move forward for those purchases. On the operating side, Public Works has money left in their asphalt line. They're hoping to move forward into next year so that they can get a lot more done in the coming year. Police, equipment, the police are requesting they they have to purchase some additional handles for their tasers and upgrade their radio and telephone system and storage in their weapon room for that seventy five thousand dollars. Natural Resources, they had some money left over in tree maintenance. Yeah, and so removing that forward because, you know, having money.
It'll go.
It'll definitely go. It'll definitely go.
It'll go, yeah.
On the legal side, we have some revow and general fund and and general legal expenses left over. We have some contracts that were moved forward. We had two contracts, I think, that were extended for a year, which will be needing to do in the coming year. So we're putting that money aside for that, plus the balance of the assessment the revow assessments that we have ongoing. And the Public Works Department also had money in salt. Each year we've been able to move money forward and and use that depending on the the winter, and we had, you know, a fairly decent winter this year, so moving moving that forward. So these are the requests from the department heads to move into twenty twenty five. So questions, comments, changes?
Pretty extensive list, pretty well described.
Yeah, yeah, very well described. I guess a general comment and there's no particular thing in this is about, but what I see is that half of our capital budget, that we we really hammered that capital budget. I mean, we scrutinized everything on it and half of it wasn't used. Specifically, three vehicles, vehicles, the topic of the day. And I completely appreciate your comments about parking wreck, and that totally makes sense to me, but you know, still setting that aside, there are a lot of projects here that people made a case that we needed and they could have started working on those. My understanding is as soon as the budget passed. So that was a long, long time ago. That little disturbing, honestly, to me. So maybe something lesson for us is when we look at the, and and part of that might be that we work so hard to keep that capital line at around a million dollars. Were we reaching? I don't, I didn't think so at the time, but maybe it's something for us to think about this year, budget time.
Well, it's very appropriate. This is August. They're in a brand new budget. We'll make that a, we'll make that an item on our next department man at meetings. So we'll take that.
With the vehicles, so like we said to her, buy another CRB to park and wreck. So from today to when it lands in their parking lot, how long does that take?
All depends whether that vehicle's available right now or not.
So that's part of the delay on the vehicles, right?
I mean, that Steve could maybe address his.
I've been waiting almost a year and a half to get a a truck.
From the, as a result of.
From the dealership. I wanted to get a Chevy. Chevy still are not available. I had to go back to a Ford because I want an F two fifty. You can get F one fifties. You can get. Because I want an F two fifty, you can get F one fifties, you can get crew cars, you can get F super duties, which I don't need. I need an F two fifty, they were totally unavailable, they wouldn't even give us a price on it because they knew they couldn't get them. This has been going on since, you know, covid. It's a middle of the road truck.
Uh that's just an example, yeah.
It's still a great point though, Sue, but that that is the least part of the explanation.
Wait, when you look at them one by one, everything, everything makes sense, so, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
So I'll just, well, I'll just note, when you look um then at these. If you approve them, um you'll see that all of those transfers um are in here, it brings our balance. Down to a surplus of just under a million dollars, which I had said we were going to be somewhere around two million dollars. Um so um that's that's where we would stand, of course that. Yeah, will be added to the the revenue surplus and then we'll be discussing what to do, how to address that.
All right, let's make the balance after transfers thing. All right, is there a motion to um approve the fund balance budget transfers? Uh on the uh operating side. Uh in the amount of one million six hundred and forty one thousand seven hundred and eighty eight dollars uh transferred from those items listed. Uh on the transfer column as well as the. Capital um uh of eight hundred, that's more than capitals, capital, the department surplus transfers, I'm sorry. Eight hundred nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars uh and a transfer to the accounts as detailed on the documentation that Mary Jane has provided. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Comments or questions? Comments, it's all good, let me try your minds all in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll be back next week with more, I mean, not next, the next month.
Practice for tonight's meeting.
Well, I'll take the reporting and just.
All right, item six, facilities manager, Steve Menard. So take possible action, purchase of a vehicle from Jangers Florida off the state contract. Number one, nine, P S X zero one, six month, uh Steve.
Looking to buy a truck off state contractors, many of you probably know. Um our F three fifty died three weeks ago, it's all rusted out, it's not worth fixing, the lift gate shot. Um I offered it to other departments and public works, we don't have any set shots, we need to just eliminate it off the uh. Town uh. Vehicle list. So I am looking for sixty nine thousand nine hundred and sixty eight dollars to buy a new truck which is sitting on a lot. Finally found, finally found one, it took this long to get one.
Okay, and what happens to the users in vehicle, would they even take that as a nominal trade in or?
Uh it'll probably be scrapped.
We'll put it on the, on the auction list.
Okay, to somebody somewhere who's creative.
Five hundred bucks for it, be off our hands.
So I, just to, I probably to ask to repeat something, but this is the same vehicle that we carried over from last year.
It it is, I was gonna do a Chevy, but.
It's the funding.
There was money there, it's not.
Okay, this is the one fifty that you've been looking for?
No, I I F two fifty, it's it's not originally what I wanted, but it's the only thing that's available.
Is it the forty two thousand from last year?
Originally it's forty two thousand before covid, they would not give us a price because they knew they couldn't get the vehicle, so now with the new truck pricing. It's up to sixty nine, so we're getting the other twenty seven thousand out of ARPA funds.
That was, that's where I was going. Oh, um. No, I'm sorry, I'm fine, I got it, I thought it was a number in the.
All right, uh is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion in a second.
Second.
Uh any further questions or comments? Here, no, let me try your minds all in favor. Motion carries, very good, good luck with it.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
You want my Suko?
No.
Sure, sure.
No, it was my birthday last night. Had a few little celebrations.
All right, item seven, town engineer, Janice Plesiak, item one, consider take possible action on a proposal from S L R. For ongoing services for permit compliance for the U S A C E, that would be the U S Army Corps of Engineers in Connecticut. Permits for prior road elevation projects and mitigation project monitoring. This is for sins of our past.
Right, yeah, so last year we um we actually built the mitigation project and we had a prior approval and proposal from S L R. And um it ended up utilizing a lot of their their labor in order to get the layout in the field done. Working with Connecticut Deep was the actual contractor who built the mitigation project at Chittenden. Um so we ended up using up that purpose order for more work than we anticipated in the field. For the construction of the mitigation project, but we still have these ongoing uh monitoring requirements as part of our permits. And the mitigation project approval uh to still uh complete going forward over the next five years. Um so having expended their last proposals amount uh out in the field with construction of the of the project. We had a, get another proposal to continue and uh hopefully this will be the last one that to close out. All of the requirements for the permits um that we had and and the monitoring of the mitigation project. We have some minor uh planting work that we may be doing in the fall. Uh with the mitigation project and Connecticut Deep is out there. Uh last week uh in the marsh doing some of the marsh um frag control work that was part of mitigation project, so, but the construction. Of the new wetland area and the access bridge that we needed as a result of the channel that was built is all complete now. I hope you all had a chance to go out and take a look at it, yeah, it it came out nice.
I have a little story about that, a friend of mine and her children were on the bridge, loved it, loved going over it. But there was a giant wasp nest that was underneath it, nobody knew, and when they stepped on the bridge, all the wasps came flying up. So she called town hall, she started for some reason with the town clerk's office, but they directed her to the right place. And this, I think the same day or the very next day, someone was out there dealing with it, I I agree, that's what that was wonderful.
Yeah, it's probably parking wreck because they maintained it.
Right, so I just wanna say that publicly because.
And I wanna say too that public works built the bridge and they did a great job, it was a a great project for them, it was a a kit bridge that I. Purchased online after doing some research, the bridge itself only cost about, it's under eighteen thousand dollars, um it's a reinforced. Um uh fiber plastic bridge and um. Public Works guys built the the uh the footings, they, you know, uh. They did some reinforcing on the slopes for erosion that we were experiencing, they even closed off a little section of the project that we decided with. Uh Megan from S L R needed to be adjusted and then they built the bridge, it came out great and I really, I think they really enjoyed the project too. Um because it's something.
Something different.
Yeah, something different, so it was a great little project.
Yeah, Janice, thanks for seeing this all the way through, this has been a long journey, um. And uh this seventy thousand on top of what was the the mitigation project with S L R.
So they um, I mean, we've been working with S L R for like ten years now, I guess, on this whole, yeah, I mean, so. I can't really exactly extrapolate full cause without sitting down and going through everything, but their last proposal was about fifty thousand dollars. We utilized most of that last year, along with uh Connecticut Deep's proposal was about fifty one thousand dollars for the construction. Still waiting for invoicing on that, hopefully won't go over too much, but they did spend more time than I think they anticipated out there. The, we're using, we're using the coastal roads account that still has a balance of about a hundred and six thousand dollars in it, so. Um that'll still leave us with a balance of about thirty thousand in that account if Deep goes over with what, you know, the works they've done, so. Hoping that that'll be enough to, you know, complete this whole saga of um permitting and compliance and mitigation.
It's uh deep, uh weighed in, are they satisfied with the work that we did?
Yeah, so I mean, the the restoration, the wetlands restoration unit actually built the project and they're really thrilled with how it's come out. It really did, it's functioning really well as as a title wetland now, um. Some of the uh plants that we did plant last year during the heat in the summer, uh most of them survived, some did not, but we've seen this. Uh supplementation of natural planting into the uh marsh, which is really nice and they're 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 good plants, not bad plants, so. Um you know, we're, and we're also seeing some wildlife in the channel itself, uh different types of fish and other species and stuff. Yeah, so um it's been really great uh uh projects, but it's been successful so far. And we have to monitor it for five years to make sure it continues to be successful and takes hold as a true.
That that photo piece, there's a, looks like there's some sort of.
Yeah, so part of the monitoring is the mitigation five year monitoring and then there's also um. We still have to go back and monitor the the effects to the marsh of some of the road projects down in Tuttles Point and um I believe Old Quarry. Um and that requires um the environmental scientists to do that uh monitoring and reporting to Army Corps. Um I'm doing the monitoring on the Culver at Tuttles Point um annually as part of our um agreements. And permits with Army Corps as well, so there's still some staff time work to be done.
Um it's nice to get to the end of the road on this, uh particularly with what we're facing, uh which we had fines in the half million dollar range. Fines and mitigation for each of the projects, so, uh great job, uh any further questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Further comments or questions, there are none, let me try your minds all in favor. Thank you, Janice, great job, great job of interpreting this all the way. Glacial pace the government worked, but it's done.
Six years of work, yeah.
Really meaningful, from our moment when we first came together, that was sort of.
It was like that.
Yeah, and it went to our.
But to 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 the integrity piece, you're absolutely right, because uh D E P's first. Uh uh proposal for this, uh in their notice of violation, they were not going to allow. Our engineering department to certify any project that involved uh deep jurisdiction. We would have had to hire outside engineering firms to do that, and last week or week and a, week and a half ago. I signed the contract uh with a contractor for a project that the Janice and the team are managing. That is deep funded, uh and it's a, it's a high priority for deep, they ask us to manage the project, so Janice's credit. Thank you. Okay. Item eight. Here's a topic nobody's ever talking about.
Nope.
Mitch Goldblatt, who was here to talk to us about consider take possible action on an A I ethical standards policy.
So, um all of you have heard about artificial intelligence, you're already using it, you know, you don't realize it. In many cases, um Samantha and I sat through a C C M uh webinar a week or so ago. Talking about A I, uh trying to get our heads around it and and more. Uh and one thing that was very strongly suggested was that all towns and cities should have what they call A I ethical standards policy. So if you move down to guiding principles, number one, under transparency. Um it says if A I is utilized in a project, the employee should reveal that fact, so. I went on and tried my luck at A I, it went on chat G P T and said, design for me. A A I policy, ethical standards policy for the town of Guilford, and zingo, within about thirty seconds, I had it. Um so I'm letting you know that this is not all original text, however, it has been reviewed. It has been re- reviewed by not just me, but our I T department as well as, more, most importantly. Uh our our legal staff at Burch and Moses, Rebecca Goldberg, for instance, went through it and gave a number of suggestions and changes. I went through and made some others, and so what I have for you. Is a proposed A I ethical standards policy that if you approve it in this form or any changes you wanna make. Uh would then be uh disseminated to all of our uh employees. So that everyone's aware that if they're using A I for certain projects, they should be revealing it, and also, most importantly, being u- using A I for ethical. Ethical purposes and and what implies with our town policies and procedures, of which this will be one.
So what do you do if someone doesn't, other than shaming?
Most other violations of any policies or procedures, there certainly could be some disciplinary actions, there's verbal warning or written warning. Um you know, I'm not anticipating this being a a troublesome situation for us, however. It's better to have something in place uh so that people are aware that we do have a policy and uh hopefully we'll we'll not abuse. It anymore than, this this reminds me of when uh, as many of us will remember, the introduction of the internet and uh. You know, utilizing it and utilizing it for for various purposes and and making sure it's used for town purposes. And it's kind of falls into that and 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 discussing this with our I T department specifically, Tony. Uh was basically saying, you already have this, and I said, well, we really don't, um and because he feels that the technology policy that we already have. Would cover this and in a way it does have a good umbrella over this, however, it was felt that um we should have something specific to A I. At least in its, in its uh infancy, uh we hear about A I being, as I've been told several times, the A I we use today. A couple of years from now will be nothing like the A I we'll be using in a couple of years, it'll be just totally different, so. It's it's a start and I don't, I don't anticipate this policy staying the way it is right now for for a long period of time. Because I imagine we'll probably update this as well, along with the times.
Just out of curiosity, the legal review, the the firm, is this their special, I mean?
Yes, uh well, Chris Hodgson is our labor attorney and and I brought to Chris's attention and he he. That passed it off to Rebecca Goldberg, who is also working with us on all of our policies and procedures, hoping to have that for you shortly. Um um she's the expert in in the firm and also pretty much, she's she's one of the experts in the state of Connecticut. She has many uh presentations about uh different policies.
She did some work with the cannabis for us, but that was a different person?
No, that was uh she made a good one.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, this is.
And this is the company that Chris.
Yeah, yeah, it's Chris's partner, yeah, Rebecca's Chris's partner, I've heard her present things many times, she's worked with us on other other policies as well in the past. Uh you know, everything to do with um you know, equal employment procedures we've had to put through and. F and L A policies I've worked on with her as well, so.
Specifically labor related.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Not things like cannabis.
I have to say, I have a big problem with something in here and I'm surprised this past legal review.
Go ahead.
We're we're talking about the use of A I as a tool and it can be a valuable tool and we need to be transparent, we need to make sure there's appropriate human oversight and so on. But we use the phrase A I decisions and I I think that's something that we want, our policy should be not to have A I decisions. It comes up under guiding principles, under transparency, A I decisions that impact the public, there shouldn't be A I decisions. It's also discussed once later, oh, under human oversight, critical decisions affecting individuals' rights. Freedoms or access to services will not be made solely by A I, I mean, that's creepy that there should be. Uh what what it goes on as saying will not be made solely by A I without human intervention, how about will not be made at all by A I? I mean, that's, I find that disturbing. So.
It's pretty broad, um.
Well, intentionally broad, but I mean, if you don't, if you wanna, you know, certainly wanna worsen this, that's fine, I mean, I I don't take. I shouldn't say I take no ownership in this, uh but I do take some, uh no, certainly, if if whatever the the board selectman is comfortable with. Uh with this is certainly fine, um the point here, I believe, Sue, is that. Uh if we utilize A I for certain policies, right? And we talk about, you know, in in everything, everything we talk about with uh personnel policies. Affects someone's freedoms in certain ways, I mean, you walk in this door, you give up certain freedoms, when you walk in the door of a a public entity, you give up certain things. So I mean, you know, but it also, the caveat here is. So I mean, you know, but it also, the caveat here is that we're not just gonna, you know, push a button and say, that's it. That someone like myself or Tony or or Mary Jane or somebody is going to oversee, you know, these kind of things, especially in the, in the HR field, but also this will, this will go uh, to be something that will have to be utilized by all of our departments, our department heads, that not just, you know, like I say, just say to ChatGPT, do this, do that, without taking some responsibility. That's the point of this, is to make sure we're taking responsibility as humans, um, for artificial intelligence and making sure we don't let it. It, it will, it, it's a wonderful tool. We don't want it to be taking over what our responsibilities are.
So, how come we don't have a policy like this for when someone uses Wikipedia for part of their work?
Well, because Wikipedia would fall under our general technology policy. Because it's something, it, it's, AI has taken on, I, I guess, a, uh, uh, a life of its own, literally, uh, that, that people feel needs to be, um, in such, in such a case that states have taken on policies, the state of Connecticut was very close, the governor was not ready, uh, was very close to coming up with his own policy. And many states have come up with policies specifically for AI to make sure it is not improperly used. And I can't, I'm, I'm not an expert on it because I've used it very little myself. Other people use it daily in, in their, in their, I'm not sure who here does, but it's a case of making sure that we, we, we we have that human oversight and that we have an ethical standard that goes with it.
I, I also have some problems with, uh, the transparency piece from the perspective that, uh, it would be explainable to the public. Uh, reveal, in fact, the approximation of the percentage of material that was AI generated. One of your opening statements was, we don't even know we're using AI most of the time. How, how do we make an employee responsible for something that you, we've just admitted, we don't know we're using?
Because the answer I got from IT was, um, every time you use Google, every time you use Siri, every time you text and the next word comes up, right?
Every time you use Amazon.
Right. It's, it's all there, but this is, this is, this is more, exactly. Uh, so that was his point, but if we talked it through more, and this is more a case of consciously utilizing AI. In other words, using a ChatGPT, using some other, that or some other, um, field in, um, uh, on the computer specifically to allow the generation of either policies or other things that, that, uh, that I'm not even aware of.
Do you have another question or is that?
No, keep going. I have more, but go ahead.
Under human oversight, the, the first sentence is, AI systems will operate under human order. What's an example of an AI system that we would initiate?
I, as I said, my understanding would be right now, it would be ChatGPT or something similar to that.
I think it's on Word. I think there's a, there's a new tab on the corner of Word. You're, you're drafting documents and it basically says editor. You highlight the paragraph, you click that thing, and it's not just check and spell.
So we're not setting up an AI system. Department, we're just saying that, you know, whether it be verbalizing or whatever, we would utilize an existing commercial.
Right.
I think it's just embedded in software increasingly, as Mitch's point, which is over time, this is just going to become part of it.
The minute we turn on the board back, we're on AI.
Yeah, it was very exciting. I mean.
That could turn another board ready with this.
To Sue's point, I really, I don't want to necessarily nitpick this thing. A lot of people have looked at it. I mean, just real quick, I'm looking at that AI decisions. You change that AI applications that addresses that one concern. Uh, I, again, lots of, you guys put a lot of energy and I hate to
No.
Chop at something.
For you to look at, if you're not comfortable, please, this is the time to do it or send it back and we'll, we'll look at it or just scrap it all together. But I think, I felt it was important enough to bring to your attention, um, as something that's happening out there that I become more and more increasingly, I hear more and more from the HR field that it's a concern. People, people use it today to fill out the job descriptions. I have not used it for that purpose. We've got good templates for our job descriptions that I can work with, but other places just, you know, just say, design me a job description for, for, for the.
Be a job application.
And that too, and a resume.
Well, uh, several months ago, I used ChatGPT to assist a small business owner in town who was looking to get a grant, a, a federal grant through the USDA to replace all of their refrigerators in their machines. Oh, the healthy foods place on a hill. Uh, and Guilford was, um, Guilford is not considered rural. So this program was under the rural, uh, USDA program. They have a caveat. If you can effectively convince the powers that be at USDA that Guilford is rural in character or rural in nature, um, you know, then they may be entitled to this funding. And what, this is, this is a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar grant that guy was giving. And what do I know about rural in character? I used ChatGPT, put my parameters in, and I had a document that was very similar to the template that the guy provided me to use as my letter of support. It was amazing. So I didn't use it. I wanted to use a template he had asked me to use, but yes, it's, it, it is, it's, it is a powerful tool if used appropriately.
And that's what I think we're trying to do is make sure it's used appropriately, like any other of our technol-, any other technology we have, to make sure it's used appropriately. And the feeling is that because it is a tool that we, myself specifically, but most of us are not real familiar with, to make sure that we do put some guidelines in place. Uh, so if there's any question, there's a guideline that says, yeah, this is what we, we've said, we, we've addressed it. We have been proactive um, and not let it take over us before we, we control it in certain ways. We are, we think we're out of control, but, but.
I thought we tabled this for a month. Everybody get a chance to dig a little deeper, pick some areas. Can you send us those in Word format?
Absolutely.
So we can, we can do change.
I'm in a different place with this. I mean, there, any of these policies, whatever, I mean, we can find a hundred different things in each sense that, you know, could be changed and everything. I, I kind of agree with Mitch's, uh, point that, uh, we just have to have a stake in the ground so that God forbid, uh, an issue pops up, we have something on the books to refer to. I mean, is it perfect? Never will be. It absolutely never will be. I mean, you could plug in now, you know, this document into, you know, some set program and everything, and it would spit out a hundred different things that you would want to fix, change, or add to or delete, uh, as an example of AI.
Yeah.
So I, I kind of, uh, as much as I hate big government and regulations and, and everything else, at some point in time in the world we live in, I, I, I think we have to have a stake in the ground so that we can say, you know, God forbid we get, you know, the lawsuit or whatever about some letter we've written or some policy we've done. And it had something wrong, you know, have something to turn to. I think it's very real. I mean, you, you're gonna find it in applications. You're gonna get canned stuff coming through. We don't have a, a policy about it. I, I think it's real. Table it. I have no problem about table it, but I, I have to agree with Mitch on this, that it's one more thing. We have to have something on the book.
I, I, I agree with that, uh, but there are, there are still some things here that concern me, particularly as it relates to the employees, uh, the requirements that we're layering on these employees. Which if not adhered, which if not adhered to, could wind up in discipline, uh, up to.
I don't want to create.
I don't want, I don't want to create that. You know, just for instance, that if AI is utilized in a project, the employee should reveal that fact. Again, if they don't know that AI, AI is part of their research or is part of the Word document they're putting together.
But it's gonna become a canned, you know, footnote.
So it's almost like if AI is utilized intentionally.
Right.
All right.
That may be a very late point, but yeah.
So why, why, why don't we table this for a month, uh, for a month or two weeks and folks take a look?
I'll send it out in Word form.
Yeah, so people can. MJ, will you?
I, I just wanted to say, you know, as, to go, um, to Sue's question about that decision, you know, as a, as a department head, I, I, I see the overlying issue just being, um, if we use something AI related, we're, we don't just, that's just not our final thing. It's kind of, it's, it's what Mitch did. He used AI. He's making a decision by giving you this document, but it wasn't just canned from AI. He went through all the processes, you, you, you know, you know what I mean? So, and, but I, but I'm reading it that way. Maybe somebody else might not. You, you know what I mean?
Not what this says to me.
Yeah, that's just don't plagiarize. I mean, you can't plagiarize from people. You can't plagiarize from a computer.
That, that's fine. So I, I
But we do that.
Respect your, your thoughts on that too.
It's just like that, but I'd like to go through this a little bit more. And I'm not opposed to it. It's a good idea and I do think we need, we need something in place.
Yeah, this should raise our awareness though.
It raises my awareness as well.
As we're sitting here talking about this issue and about how people use resources to, to create their jobs, I can think of no better example where you had to change the words. Was we had, my mother bought a set of encyclopedias from a traveling salesman. I just gave it to one of my nieces. It was a set twenty-four.
What is this?
Came with its own, um, case, but I remember painstakingly doing research in Encyclopedia Britannica. Took up a stuff. Is that AI? It's not machine, it's not machine automated, but is that a form of, you know, taking information from another source?
Plagiarism, you don't cite it, right?
That was pretty, both my parents were certified as teachers. Plagiarism was not allowed in our house also. So, uh, is there a motion to, uh, table this until our next meeting?
Second.
Uh, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds all in favor.
This is healthy and I think it's, uh, gonna help us get to a, uh, a good policy that we can all.
Let me just spit out the landhold. We're done. We've passed it and we're gonna look it over. But I mean, just today, we literally talked about automated line striping for the fields, right? Which is talking to some satellite somewhere, which is talking to, uh, whoever sold this machine. And somebody's got a, that operator has got a prepared report that says fourteen percent of my work was performed. I want to just think through the program. Without creating craziness. This is great that we're thinking about it. So thank you, thank you.
Can we ask one more question? So, once this is adopted in some form, it joins other policies.
Right.
Do the employees sign off on something saying, I?
So, in, interesting, good segue. So, uh, if you give me thirty more seconds, uh, yes, every, all new employees are given a, um, personnel policy manual, which is in dire need of updating. Rebecca Goldberg and I have been working on this for some time. It just keeps getting pushed aside by other priorities. Uh, we are close to coming up with a new policy manual for all of you to resolve, look at, and, and hopefully approve, although that's gonna be a much more uh, intense because of above all of our policies. Uh, the current policy manual has a lot of information that's superseded by either individual contracts and more importantly, collective bargaining. So a lot of it will disappear, but we're gonna hone in on, on the policies that are important to people. To answer your question specifically, yes, we have certain policies that you as a board, not you specifically this board, but boards, the selectmen have said, we want this policy signed individually, such as the injury policy. Is it, is a separate policy? I've got to go through with people. What happens if you get injured? They sign for that separately. The technology policy itself is something people sign for separately. And then everything else is signed for as, as a part of, of a, um, technology, uh, as a personnel policy, uh, manual. I'm hoping that when we're done with this, which would include something here, uh, that we will have one document that will go off to everyone. It'll go out to everyone electronically, uh, and they will electronically sign it back.
Yeah.
Uh, and we'll have that, uh, on everyone's, uh, personnel file that they have, because they have, uh, uh, received it and will abide by it. Can't force them to read it, but they have to be familiar with it and abide by it.
Went to a CCM, is?
It was a webinar.
A webinar. Do they have anything for employees? I, I mean, is there a, this AI thing seems to be up here, even by, you know, is there the CCM contemplate having a, a webinar that employees could view to explain, to even explain what AI is? And, and, you know, you can give them the policy, all great, but I, I, I almost think this one needs a little bit more
Background?
Information. Look at all the questions you had in this one. You know what I mean? So I didn't know if maybe CCM might have a, have a webinar.
We've proven we can beat a dead horse pretty good around here once in a while, but not that we're doing that here. So Mitch, I want to follow up on Sue's. That's usually Charlie's line. Stop stealing. Have we taken a step through this today?
Yeah.
How would it have been distributed to, uh, to all the employees?
That, with this particular policy, I would have sent out electronically to all employees and, and just made sure. And it would have been up to you. I would have discussed this if you passed it, whether we wanted everyone to acknowledge or have a signature sheet, or whether just getting it out there, just sending it out would have been good enough. That's up to you. Um, like I say, in the future, I'll make this part of a, of an overall policy manual that we'll hopefully have soon. That would have been up to you as to whether it would be another specific policy or whether it would be one, such as you've, you've approved things for me on travel, you've approved things on FMLA, on caregiver rights and things like that. We, we put those, we just add those to the personal policy. I mean, I send it out to everyone so they're aware of it. And then for new employees, it gets tacked on to the, the current policy, which was what I expect this would be.
I would assume that the criteria, the decision criteria on whether or not we ask someone to sign individually is if, uh, if a violation of same could result in an impact to their employment here, and this clearly would. So this would be one of those policies where I would anticipate you'd send it out to everybody.
Good. Right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, Consider Take Possible Action to Waive Section Two Hundred and Fourteen, uh, A of the Town Code to Allow Serving Alcoholic Beverages During the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Tournament on Sa- Saturday, September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Jay, you still awake?
Oh, come here.
That's AI.
Sorry, sorry for sit through all of this. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, this is, this is the, uh, annual fundraiser. That emanated from the review of the golf course, uh, efficacy and, and viability a few years ago. Those concerns have been completely eliminated. I think this is a great effort. And one of the things I like about this, the, um, the, the provider of the alcohol is a Guilford resident, a man from, from Guilford who started a brewery up in Rhode Island. He is donating, I believe he's donating the, the, the materials or the, the beverages. So, uh, I wouldn't necessarily say it, it's Whalers.
And, um, this is, last year, there was that unfortunate thing where the tournament was the same day as the parade, I think. But this year it's, so that's wonderful.
Well, since we're being asked to waive our policy, I would appreciate a more specific request, you know, why is it necessary? How has it worked in the past? What are the safeguards? Can you talk a little bit about?
Necessary side of it is we're getting a younger crowd, which is a happy thing with beer, by the way. It's, it's a cynical way to look at it, but it's kind of true. Um, however, we have a lot of kids playing now. And so we're also figuring out how we're going to incent them there. We anticipated at least ten percent, which would be seven to ten kids showing up, uh, to play at the tournament. So we've got to face that and have something off to the side. Um, we do this annually. We look at about a two K surplus in terms of money. So it's a happy, happy situation for us. Um, and we cement some, um, interest in helping out, for example. Well, we're going to that, but we're talking with golfers, uh, as we celebrate the end of the tournament. So, uh, I think you can be sure that the alcohol side of it is minor, uh, but it is there and we need to have your permission to do so.
And how will you make sure? You mentioned more attendance by kids. How will you make sure that the kids are not served?
Uh, it's, we've talked about it as a commission itself, sat there and said, look, we're gonna have more kids. What are we gonna do about this? We don't want them grabbing a, a can and heading off into the bushes. Uh, and that's about what our.
And what was the conclusion? What are you going to do?
Stand there. We have, we have commission members actually serving. We serve this. We don't hire somebody to serve.
Okay, so there's not a bin sitting out there. Somebody will be standing with it and?
Yeah, there will be a bin, but it will be right next to our table with food. And, uh, there's always our staff, our guys there, our commission guys there.
One of the conditions, as I say, they still, uh, we're only step one. They've still got to go to the state. One, one of the conditions, as I say, they still, uh, we're only step one. They've still gotta go to the state and get, uh.
We got it.
Got states and then require somebody to go through some training, if I'm not mistaken. To be certified. The state has a cert.
They have not mentioned that to us. We've not done that.
I would look at, I should look, you should look into that.
Okay, thank you. I will do so. But just know, Sue, that we are, we're there serving and we've all, we've talked about kids. That's an important issue for us.
Yeah. And I, I assumed that you would have, but I think that to request us to waive our policy about alcohol, which we hardly ever.
Except on the green.
Yep.
On the green and this one.
And we're aware of that. Quite aware of it.
It's a, it's a daytime event of about four hours. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And it's not, not while.
Extend into the evening or anything.
No.
I think that program is called TIPS and that's an acronym for something, a certification that you do online uh, for people that are gonna normally don't serve alcohol.
I'll look into that.
Can we, can you designate someone who is this TIPS cert by a person who's gonna be responsible for this aspect of?
I think we could. I have not looked into this, what the law and the process timing is right now, but we do have time to get this done. I can get back to you on that.
Sure.
Do you have any feel, I mean, this is not the first time I remember granting this approval. What is the volume of beer that is soon?
Uh, too much. He brings way too much and, and so it's always a little competition on what we get to take go individually.
Give me an example of the volume that we're talking about. How many people and how many?
We get seventy, we get seventy people after the tournament, about forty to fifty actually show up to do raffle and all the rest of it. It's, uh, and during that period of time, it's probably fifty percent leave within the first twenty minutes to thirty minutes.
So I know the volume of people, how about the volume of beer?
Yeah. Um, I import that. How many cases? It's, they're all cans, okay? It's not, uh, uh, a draft beer. And my guess, it's, uh, I'm just not good at this. If you would take ten cases, that would be sixty, so it's probably, probably more than ten cases. Hey Jay, I'm, I'm sorry, Charles.
Two hundred, by cases.
Oh, no, I meant six packs. I'm not a beer drinker, so I'm really not.
Well, me either. That's why I'm trying to get a feel for how many cans of beer three people are going to consume in a four hour period.
Yeah.
Just to get a feel for what kind of numbers we're talking about.
Yeah. Again, he oversupplies, which is a, a nice thing. Commission members are diddling up who's gonna take one home. So that's a happy side of it. My sense, I don't wanna get misleading with numbers, Charles. I, I really don't. But it's not enormous.
All right. Yeah, I do think Susan has a point here about a little bit more specific in this request about, you know, not necessarily alcohol, it's beer, pure. Uh, so I, I think Susan's got a valid point about a little bit more specific. I, I, I don't know of any problem you've had in the past. It, it seems to be working. It adds to the event. So I, I don't have a problem with it, but a little bit more specific wouldn't hurt because here we are.
Yeah. And I was unaware of tips and I will let you know what we're doing.
Tell you right now, the department, I'm looking at it, Department of Connecticut, Department of Consumer Protection has an online program. You sign up, it's thirty-eight bucks per person and, um, I haven't gotten past this screen here, but it looks pretty straightforward, so.
Anybody who's actually gonna serve the alcohol?
Per server.
No, wait, do you have?
Not one person responsible. Somebody's out there.
Anybody that's at the, at the fair, you know, I do the fairs. So at the fairs, anybody who's actually serving the alcohol has to have certification.
Okay.
Volunteers, whatever. So if you're.
So from our perspective, the important thing is for us to know that somebody's responsible for it. That somebody's making sure that that's the case.
Yep.
Not, not, not the serving aspect, the person making sure that the people who are serving.
Right. Anyway, let's hope for good weather.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Jay, look, uh, any follow up would be greatly, greatly appreciated.
Yeah, we'll use a couple lines on what we're doing. Make sure you're safe.
All right, let me, uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Item ten, consider take possible action to set up public hearing date for September sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Uh, at eight thirty AM, it's Town Hall. Invite Zoom to receive public comment on an amendment to the Guilford Affordable Housing Commission ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
I can do a little extra.
Yeah, that's what it's going there next.
We still don't have the, uh, commission actually commissioned because a, a good point was brought up and when it first came on our agenda, I think in June, that, um, we had, um, we didn't have the bare minimum of, of the ruling party. We had too many Ds and not enough representation from Republican, Independent, or Unaffiliated voters. We, we were operating under a mistake, thinking that we didn't have to do it, but we found out we do need to do it. So, um, we've just expanded the commission because we have some good, strong members that when we formed the committee ten years ago, it was not, uh, we, party representation was not an issue. But it so happens that, um, there were more Democrats than, uh, other parties represented. There was, um, at the time, several Republican members, but there's only one at the moment when we, when we, um, constituted the original, uh, group of six or seven. So anyway, it's gonna, this amendment is going to increase the to- total, um, membership to ten with the understanding that, um, the, the additional people will come from parties, um, Republican, Independent, or Unaffiliated. And we have a few Independent people who have expressed interest because it's, you know, we've talked about this publicly. If we get to a point where we can't fill all four with something, something other than, with the three parties that I mentioned, or the two parties and Unaffiliated, I guess theoretically you could, if you had an interested Democrat, but you don't do that until you have tried all evidence. Is that correct? So I just wanna be.
The, the lack of emerging candidates does not, will not constitute the inability to continue to operate.
Right. So, um, so we have to amend the ordinance and it has to be publicized. So, so all we, the only amendment is to increase the, um, uh, makeup up to ten members as opposed to, um, six.
That's not what we have here.
It's eleven totally. First eleven are designated individual and ten additional regular members and two alternates. So it's only ten, it's eleven voting, uh, but two alternates to, uh, and, and the alternates also fall under the bare majority rule as well.
And it's moving, I, I thought the point of this, based on what we have, is to move, um, the, the planning and zoning commission member and the housing authority member.
We did. We, they became, um, they're not gonna be able to vote.
So that's what we're, that's what the, that's what the change is. That's what we're looking at.
Well, but we also, we also increased the, um.
Third paragraph down has some crossouts.
Excuse me. Sue, Sue's actually correct. You've already had a public hearing and increased the, to the ten members. So that's already been done. You're, now you're just doing it to where those aren't gonna be the voting members. They're just gonna be like liaison. So that's correct.
Solved another problem because there, the, there's a, this represent, we need representation from the Guilford Housing Authority. And we have a very, an interested person who wants to do that. Um, and that's, that's a very small group. It's only four people, but anyway, or five. But their rule and their, as part of their, uh,
It's state statutes.
They, they can't be a voting member on another commission. They can serve as a representative too. So that solved that. So.
Yeah, so, but that's all we're doing. We're not.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm sorry.
No.
We're just, we're getting there.
Yeah.
Sure.
I hope so. I, I, I hope so. Um, so I will say to anybody watching the meeting today, we still are accepting applications for membership to the commission. The membership has not been officially, um, approved by the selectman yet because of this, uh, situation where we're trying to make it right, so.
But we have, we have, uh, a slate that was nominated by the, uh, ad hoc commission.
Right, but then it didn't pass, so.
But I, I'm assuming that those members, those members are still.
They may have not been notified.
Yeah.
No one has actually been, we've gotten a letter that says, we, we are, understand you wanna be a member of this and we, we approved it and you have to commit and, um, sign a form, et cetera. We haven't done that, I guess.
We could, they just can't start to, to operate, um, and.
Well, what, I, I'm not prepared to do it today, okay?
Okay. No, of course, of course. I just didn't, I, I lost track of the fact that we didn't actually put anybody in.
So, um, and I do have a question with the ten and then you're a voting member. Um, that makes it eleven. So what is the bare majority then?
Bare majority would be six, no more than six.
Yeah, okay.
No more than six from one party.
No more than six, okay. Just wanna be, so we need. So we still, I'm, I'm looking at Deb. We still need.
I know. I know, I know. You know, I know somebody who has incredible experience on HUD and all this other stuff, but the person wanted to know, you know, what would, you know, I, I tried to get something about when you might meet or what was.
I'll be happy to talk to that person.
Okay.
You have my cell phone number, right?
No, no, it's okay. Don't give it out.
Oh, it's public. I don't care. Two oh three nine. Nine eight eight one five three five.
Okay, thank you.
It is. It's out there.
Thank you.
No, we want your mother's maiden name. I know, unfortunately you do.
Okay, so, uh.
So if there were enough people, for, for the future, future meeting, if there were enough people that you have, yeah, the forms in for, to not, not, not violate the rules to get the committee started, could we get, could you get a quorum? I mean, if you had.
So I'll leave, I'm gonna leave that to Pete, I'm gonna leave that to Pete to interpret what we can do.
We would, we would love to do that. I mean, cause it's, 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 uh, we are trying desperately to get the right balance here, but we'd also like to become a commission and meet, even if we don't have the full eleven. So that's great if we can find that out. Cause, and I feel badly about the people that applied in March and we haven't been able to let them know, so.
That would be good.
I think most of those folks know that they're in.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Ending these changes.
It's all good. Yeah. It's all good. We're getting there.
Yeah.
All right, it's, uh, we have a motion and a second on setting the hearing. Uh, is there any other questions or comments? Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item eleven, appointments and resignations. Uh, act on a recommendation to appoint Fred Trotta Senior to the Board of Fire Commissioners for a term to expire on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-seven. Is there a motion?
I'm so moved.
Yes, I thought this was the one where you said I, I will take that.
He's a friend of yours as well.
Yes.
Okay, uh, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
I just want a footnote here. Um, Fred will be replacing Ken Wilson, who has been, uh, a long-term member of the Fire Commission, long-term chair. Uh, and he's done that over, in, in various terms over the last twenty plus years, I think. So, uh, thank you to Ken for his, his hard work. Uh, eleven dot two, uh, act on a recommendation will appoint John D'Agostino to the Shellfish Commission to, uh, fill a vacancy for a term to expire February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second.
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds all in favor. That motion carries unanimously. Act on a recommendation to reappoint Russ Campaign to the Building Code Board of Appeals for a new term to begin October sixteen, twenty twenty-four and expire October fifteenth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Uh, item eleven dot four, act on a recommendation to reappoint the Tim Coskill to the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission for a new term to, uh, begin October twenty twenty-four and expire, uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, I'd like to make that recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, act on a recommendation to reappoint the Tim Coskill to the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Uh, eleven dot six, act on a recommendation to reappoint Steve Berry to the Guilford Lakes Golf Course for a term to expire on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
I would like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any comments or questions? We can all second it. He's a friend as well. Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, act on a recommendation to reappoint Vipul Patel to the Harbor Management Commission for a term to expire on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion? Excuse me.
So moved.
Second. Second, hello. Uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Eleven dot eight, act on a recommendation to reappoint Anthony DeLuca to the Public Works Commission for a term to expire on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, any further comments or questions? No, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Eleven dot nine, act on a recommendation to reappoint Adam Toulon to the Standing Building Committee for a term to expire on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Uh, any further comments or questions? No, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Eleven dot ten, act on a recommendation to reappoint Cindy Gerstle to the Youth and Family Services Board for a new term to begin October twenty, uh, October one, twenty twenty-four and expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second? Yeah, uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Eleven dot eleven, uh, is there a motion to move Todd Fanciolo uh, from an alternate to a full-time position on the HDC?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries. Request for, uh, use of town property, act on a request from the country school to place a sign on the green advertising its open house on November third, twenty twenty-four, signing placement, uh, October, uh, twenty-first through November third. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Twelve dot two, act on a request from Christ Church to place a sign on the green, advertising its tag sale on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion.
Second, uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Eleven, twelve dot three, act on a request to use green for an art installation to benefit the Guilford Fair Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Committee reports, I think we've already heard from Sandy, that's the one we're echoing at this point. Um, on correspondence other than. Okay, uh, old business? New business? Public forum? No public forum today? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion?
And a second?
Second.
All in, let me try your minds. See you, Deb. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you.